Okay, good afternoon. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, May sixteenth. First on the agenda this evening, we have two proclamations. I've asked Mayor Potem to present the first one, which is for Infrastructure Week. And I think we have our city engineer accepting it. Come up.
Yes, I think he knows something about infrastructure. A proclamation. Whereas the week of May fifteen through nineteen twenty twenty-three inclusive is observed in Marion and nationally as Infrastructure Week. And whereas the residents of Marion rely on critical infrastructure, including our roads, our bridges, our railroads and transit systems, our ports and airports, our pipes and water systems, our reliable power supply, our access to broadband and our connectivity to the regional, national and global economy. And whereas this infrastructure enhances our local and regional economy, our life, quality of life, our safety and the strength of our communities. And whereas decades of underfunding and deferred maintenance have pushed infrastructure to the brink of a national crisis with preventable catastrophic failures, including derailments and collapses occurring as a result. And whereas the United States of America risks compromising its competitive advantage over foreign economies by failing to invest adequately in its infrastructure. And whereas proper infrastructure results in fewer delays in traffic and reduced waste of time and resources. And whereas every dollar invested in infrastructure generates nearly two dollars in economic output. And whereas to grow our economy, keep Americans safe and strengthen communities, we need all levels of government, government and the private sector to work together to rebuild and repair our nation's critical infrastructure. And whereas Infrastructure Week twenty twenty-three has been established to highlight infrastructure investment needs and to recognize and encourage leadership at the federal, state and local levels. And whereas Infrastructure Week challenges policymakers and the public to address the challenges facing the United States infrastructure, to move beyond short-term fixes and deferred maintenance and to envision innovative solutions, technologies, policies and investments that will improve America's infrastructure future. Now therefore, I, Grant Harper, on behalf of Nicholas Nicholas Abouasely, Mayor of the City of Marion, do hereby designate the week of May fifteen through nineteen twenty twenty-three as Infrastructure Week in Marion and call on all residents to observe this week with appropriate activities. Mike? Present you this proclamation and I know, as we all know, the efforts that you and your team make to help improve our city from an infrastructure standpoint. Okay.
I'll just make this real quick. For those that do not know, the American Society of Civil Engineers Iowa Section released our report card later, earlier this year at the State Capitol. The state as a whole got a C. I believe there's like eighteen different categories that we rate each other on. I think the lowest was a D in dams. So there's a lot of areas in there to improve on. So if you Google Iowa Infrastructure Card ASE, you can see that and see that report compiled. I may have wrote one of the chapters being a former board member. So, thank you.
Thank you. The second proclamation is for Military Appreciation Month, and we don't have anyone in particular here to accept this, but I would love to have anyone who served in the Armed Forces to come up and stand with me as I read the proclamation. Please come on up. We only have one person who served in the Armed Forces? Anyone else? Okay.
We're few anyway. We're the green.
Whereas the the freedom and security that people of the United States enjoy today are director's also the sacrifices made and the continued vigilance demonstrated by the United States Armed Forces over the history of our great nation. And whereas the service and sacrifice made by members of the United States Armed Forces and their families have presented the liberties, have preserved the liberties that have enriched this nation, making it unique in the world community. And whereas in two thousand and four, the United States Congress passed a resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, encouraging all Americans to remember those who gave their lives in defense of freedom and to honor the men and women of all our armed services who have served and are now serving this great country together with their families. And whereas Marion residents are encouraged to recognize the incredible sacrifices made by our men and women in uniform and their families and the significant contributions they have made and continue to make in the defense of this nation and the preservation of our freedom. And whereas Armed Forces Day is nationally celebrated on the third day, third Saturday of every May, this year falling on May twentieth. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abouasely, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Military Appreciation Month in the City of Marion, Iowa. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a presentation on the Laux Park Master Plan. You have our Parks Director Seth.
Your Honor, Counsel, today we have Mike Sharp and Colt McDermott from RDG here to present the Laux Park Master Plan.
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Mike and I are very excited to be with you all this evening to talk through the steps that we took during the Laux Park Master Plan update and everything that has concluded in the overall master plan to date. Perfect. Just love when systems work. That's great. So first and foremost, just want to say thank you to everybody that collectively made this project happen in the past and kind of continually into this master plan process. It was really great to hear all of the user feedback that we got to hear at Music Under the Moon events, at stakeholder group events and et cetera. Throughout the process, everybody is very thankful for what that park has to offer for the community both today and what they're excited that that park might have to offer in the future. So just first and foremost, thank you to everybody that was committed to this effort and continues to be committed to maintaining the park, continuing to look at programming for the park and other amenities that help serve quality of life here in Marion and the region beyond. So just a really quick overview of what we did throughout the project, then we're going to try to dive into the master plan as quickly as we can here. We first off did a document of discovery and what that entails is looking at some analysis as to what's in the park now, what type of programming, what the facilities look like, overall infrastructure. And then also looking back at the existing master plan that was done years ago. So what we do during that process is try to understand what's been done, what's been built out, what was kind of lacking and what was kind of moving forward from that park master plan that we could implement into the park master plan update to make sure that we're kind of in alignment. Because obviously, when you do a master planning update, things change a long time. So we've got to kind of re-catalogue what's been built today, what's working well and what facilities might get built here in the near future. Then after that, we went through a process of going through conceptual design options. So we had two iterations of conceptual designs, those prioritize different pieces that we heard during the stakeholder groups and what influences people might see as priority throughout the park and made sure that those priorities were in both options. And they had semi-different layouts just to understand what types of priorities people are most excited about and how those might orient themselves in the park. One of the big things we heard throughout the process was trying to keep as much of the natural open space as possible with the trails, with things like bird watching and other things going on in the park. So we tried to make sure that we didn't overprogram, but we offered the programs that folks were asking for. Then from there, we got into the master plan and then we're here tonight to talk through the approval process and go over the master plan update.
Thank you, Colt. Mike Sharp. As a personal note, I just want to say my last ten years have been spent in Omaha, but I was born and raised here. So I've lived in Marion, I have family in Marion. My dad and my grandfather actually worked on the house just east of Tenth on the northeast side of the park. So this being my first project with RDG, it's it's been extra special and really exciting process. So really, really excited, excuse me, to dive into this. As Colt mentioned, and I I trust and hope that you've all seen the packet in the past couple of days, just again, reiterating a huge thank you to all the different committees from city staff, Seth and Brent, Technical Committee, Steering Committee, all the different stakeholder interviews. Just just a wealth of information, which is instrumental, very, very important to developing this process, which has taken about six or seven months. So you go back to when we first met in the fall, like like Colt said, just a wonderful wealth of information and a lot of good stuff to 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 deal with. So if you can recall from your packet, the twenty eleven existing master plan as it currently sits, and you compare that to what you've seen in the packet and on the screen here, really, there's not a whole lot of big, big ticket changes. Some of the moves and some of the design and the revisions are really somewhat subtle. And as they respond to some of the existing different events and features and mazes that you have in the park and really just looking to expand and improve upon those efficiencies. We've looked at some of the integration of topography, existing watershed and drainage, existing infrastructure utilities, really taking into consideration traffic, circulation, vehicular and pedestrian. And really just trying to look to button up a nice cohesive, more uniform efficiency in terms of organization of spaces. One of the resounding themes you're going to see from the packet, you're going to see here, and we're going to talk a little bit about here, that that really coming out of all the focus groups and all the discussions and meetings where there are essentially six main core areas of focus. As we, we're going to work for our way from east to west, from right to left across the park. And you can see it's the the Art Pond, the Art Trail, the Arts and Environmental Center Building, which I will just, for lack of time, I'm going to say AEC Building. There's the Southwest Pond by the Maintenance Building, along with the South Neighborhood Playground Area. There's a meditation retreat and arboretum space, which is probably the biggest newest proposal in terms of programming and events and amenities. There are the improvements to the ballfields one through four, five through eight, and then there's obviously just consideration and thought towards future growth on the north side. So as we deal through that, we're going to look at essentially, we're going to go through here step by step, showing the, some of the contextual imagery that's going to help support these areas. So again, this first area, the Art Pond, the Trail Loop. The imagery that we pulled through here really was a back and forth working with both committees, technical and steering committee to understand what really helps paint that picture. You know, again, this is a master planning document. We're not trying to get too into the weeds, but we're trying to understand, you know, what has worked, what hasn't worked, what do we need to approve upon, what are some wonderful examples? And we we had wonderful feedback in terms of things that were done well at Indian Creek Nature Center, Morgan Creek, Wookiee Up, Squaw Creek, and again, so e- even just regionally in Iowa City, Eastern Iowa area, and then it even just grew in terms of nationally. You're going to see some images and hear that poll from different precedent studies and references from anywhere from Phoenix, Chicago, Omaha, Des Moines, and and where with all, all over the place. But so this is basically the these zoomed in areas, looking at these focus areas. As you look at the Art Pond and the Trail Loop area, and and the phasing plan is going to come here at the end of that, so we'll talk about that. So this is just individual breakdowns. But this Art Pond, this exhibit lawn, this Art Trail, really, I mean, it's no, it's obvious to everyone that Tenth Street is the main signature piece. It is the curb appeal. It is the the front entry. And as we consider future growth to the north, you're going to have a lot more of the traffic and a lot more integration coming from the north heading south. So really, there is a desire and there's discussion about how can we capture and work with the existing topographies that we have. We had our civil engineers take a look at watersheds, drainage, topography. And there is this wonderful opportunity to create what you're seeing on the screen as essentially a two-acre sized pond. We're really focusing on what that means. Again, Colt mentioned it earlier about natural integration, really honoring the past, honoring honoring Iowa's roots and and what was here, you know, from farmland, historic prairies, natural vegetation, and then really sort of bring that element of water interaction in play. Man, to to its title, the Arts and Environment Center Building, it's these wonderful opportunities for learning opportunities, integration of kids, the public, school, church, various groups. So as you can see there, essentially, we're trying to take that experience and really integrate that activity into the water, whether it's kids playing on the existing trails, a little bit more of an organization there in terms of, whoops, where's my, I apologize. We are going forward. First glitch. Here we go. That's what I'm doing. So you're you're seeing again, everything's housed in terms of a trail and really organizing organizing all these gray dots is basically examples of the the existing art sculptures, proposed future art sculptures, wanting to basically have that all in one central area. So if I'm a pedestrian, I'm a first time user of the park, I don't have to go across a park drive. I don't have to cut across traffic. It it's this nice housed area all in this front door as you're coming in off of Tenth Street. Think we were joking earlier as we came in that we could probably spend about thirty to forty-five minutes essentially alone on the Arts Environment Center Building. There's just a ton of activities, as you well know, there are plenty of wonderful features and amenities to this space. The trick in in what you saw, the challenge in terms of the conceptual plans was going through the facilities plan and understanding what the needs assessment was. And so obviously, we're right, the existing buildings right now, eleven thousand square foot footprint. After going through the programming, we understand that essentially it came out to, we almost need a size that's double that. So we're looking at twenty-two thousand, give or take, as well as space for a storm shelter. We're obviously more sensitive to severe weather with the derechoes and everything that's been happening. So we want to be cognizant, mindful, be planning for the future. One of the challenges was then just thinking about working with the existing geometries, the existing architecture, the existing uses, paying honor and homage to the existing amphitheater and how wonderful an asset that is aesthetically, architecturally, all the different events, whether that's a huge event or the smaller, more intimate ones throughout the course of the year. What you're seeing here then again is pulling from what we already have, but looking at some of these different uses, the the area in gray really basically shows what would be the building extension or addition, some sort of renovation. And then this area right here indicates the a new relocation and area of the greenhouses with a headhouse. Essentially, we're trying to organize all of those existing uses, whether that's art exhibits, classrooms, offices, gathering spaces. But also the thinking and being mindful of efficiencies for proximity to bring those learning opportunities for the greenhouse space. We're talking to the master gardeners, understanding their different needs and what would be just more efficient in terms of infrastructure utilities, how to be sustainability, how to teach that, how to show that. And instead of having a large spread out campus, it really just made a lot more sense to have this really strong east-west, what I'll call an east-west kind of access and connection. With that, you're going to see that we've reorganized, relocated the community gardens. What you'll notice about that is we did do a one-to-one swap, so we're not losing any, we're, we don't show more. Or we're trying to honor and respect what's there, but we're also trying to be mindful of the thought that, you know, this is a popular thing. We've heard strong proponents and favoritism towards that with the ability to grow. There's an existing orchard. We've tried to allocate that or relocate that in here because of just how that the connections and how that plays well with the greenhouse and the community gardens. And then on the east side, you're going to notice that there's more of an entry, dedicated entry plaza and entrance space for those main events, those concerts and what's happening on the the amphitheater and different concerts. So with that, we take the existing playground area, water features, and we've moved that over right here just to the northwest corner. So as you go from east to west, you have those existing programs, you have the opportunity to have those outdoor activities. You see right here kind of that outdoor courtyard patio plaza space for dining, beverages, different functions, intimate gatherings that can still be a standalone if there is, if there is an activity going on at the stage. But at the same time, could be somewhat linked to whatever, whatever performance is what's happening there. And then the last thing you're obviously going to notice is really trying to preserve as much existing pavement and be as efficient and and honoring what's there in terms of the existing circulation, being mindful and cognizant of bus drop-off, emergency services, delivery trucks. So what you see here in dark gray would be an extension of the parking, trying to thread that needle in terms of, like we said, it is a wonderful gem. It is a natural, wonderful treasure of a park, very, with the proximity to city and urban landscape. So not to overdo the paving and be, you know, strike that balance in terms of what's too much parking, where can we do the overflow parking? What does that mean? So that's indicated here on the green, green and brown areas in terms of overflow grass parking. The next area is the Arboretum Meditation Natural Area. So what I would say about this is this, this was a recurring theme with all of our different groups and all of our conversations is that trying to have a separate space that focuses a little bit more on the senses, a little bit more integration of the natural beauty of the site. But is at the same time a standalone structure, a place to go that is not completely dependent on the Arts and Environment Center Building? To that point, it made, as we look through it and we work through the different studies and topography and infrastructure, parking, you know, taking in all the different factors, we understood that, you know, again, there's not a lot of programming with this. But in terms of the overall footprint, we're showing it, we're showing a building that is roughly five to six thousand square feet, knowing that we would need future studies and understanding of what the needs and wants are going to be for what that would be programmed to be. Along with that though, again, it ties in this whole idea about education, learning opportunities. So what you see here then are the wetland areas. Again, civil engineers have taken a look at the drainage patterns. We've worked with the technical committee here, the city engineers about what what makes sense, what's viable, as well as creating places of shade and refuge. And again, take, giving a nod to the history, showing the different trees and different plantings and vegetation, whether that's prairie restoration or just thick growth, excuse me, thick groves of trees, providing opportunities for those nodes of shade, places to learn. And then the third link to this would be what is an outdoor classroom and you and you actually see that on the the Art Pond on the east side as well. Smaller intimate gatherings, you could still have performances, they don't happen to have to occur at the Clopstein Amphitheater, something that could be in that ten to fifteen, could be a school group, field trip, could be a family reunion, could even go up to a hundred, one hundred and twenty people. We're thinking something informal like you see over at Indian Creek Nature Center. Fourth area, and as we go and as we get to the phasing at the end here, one of the things I would note about the existing pond and what we call the South Lodge and the the South Playground Area, Neighborhood Playground Areas. The existing pond was probably one of the top two or three items that was really a priority of of being utilized and getting some use out of it improvements too. Mostly, we, and as I'm sure you're all aware, it it does not hold water. It it is seen as an asset when you have those hard rains and it fills up momentarily. It does get a lot of usage. It's in a prime spot, prime location. It's in a nice little nucleus there between the the ballfields, the natural areas on the east side in terms of the AEC Building, and then obviously that natural integration as you come from the neighborhoods from the south of Irish Drive. So really, what we looked at that is, you know, how do we improve upon that? Similarly to the Art Pond on the east side, after running the studies, this pond, you know, we we see that it actually can grow, it could expand. The what we show right there is size in that two to three acre in terms of a footprint. The biggest, the biggest hurdle, and this will be a cost thing, as you see at the end, i- is in terms of getting in the logistics and the details about how do we maintain that water? You know, do we need, do we need to, do we keep the dam site and the pond outlet structure where it is? Can we come back and as we, you know, grade it and expand it, can we actually add a clay liner to help, you know, maintain that water level? Also, in terms of the actual engineering of that pond. But that being said, you do have the existing forested area, there's a, there's a lot of tree canopy there that is highly sought after. We had comments after comments about how it'd be nice to have a nice little integration in terms of hammocks, different quiet places to go sit, park benches, kind of informal natural areas to really get that refuge, get, you know, experience the water, you get the hands and feet in the water. Or also, at the same time, do you experience that through a boardwalk? Is it some sort of fishing pier? So essentially, you know, two to three acre pond, you know, a really quality size. And again, just, once again, just that, that nice central location for all the different activities that are going on. I mean, a hundred eighty, eighty acre park is obviously large. And so you're going to be able to kind of feed that from all the different directions of activity. Another item you're going to see here on the west side is this, the symbol right here indicating some more natural play as well as tying in this whole piece from east to west in terms of the existing playground there and looking to integrate some, a few more features and amenities there. Maybe the third or fourth comment in terms of priority would be, was the desire for integrating a dog park. So that's what you're seeing here in this upper right-hand portion right there in terms of sheer footprint, separating out the large breeds from the small breeds, fencing, what does that mean in terms of turf, landscape areas, durability and efficiency and maintenance? So really, when we, when we looked at this, as a package as a whole, with the linkages that you get provided from additional parking off of Irish Drive, what we're calling this right here with my mouse is that that South Lodge, which could be just essentially almost just something for storage, materials, whether it's kayaks, canoes, fishing, restrooms, I mean, what have you. Again, the programming to be seen. There's a nice connection east-west in terms of a nice flow, being able to go back and forth and use these areas. One of the things we did here is a resounding no to maybe a traditional post deck playground structure, something you would typically see in your neighborhood park. Want to think a little bit more outside the box, want to be a little bit more natural. We done, I've, I've worked on a playground down in Lewisville, Platte River State Park, working with Crouch Recreation, and it's a, yes, it's playground material, but it's maybe some, some of the more new trendy items, playground structures and features and amenities that, you know, you haven't seen in the last twenty, thirty years. And how can we integrate that into that natural feel using the natural rock outcroppings and boulders as you'll see here with like a water splash pad spray ground? The fifth area, and again, we had, we had a chance in the stakeholders group to talk with Marion and Lenmar Baseball and Softball Members. Really great conversations. And I think the basic understanding is that in terms of sheer, you know, real estate and space, we're not looking to get more fields. We're looking just to basically improve what we have there. The understanding and the conversations really centralized around circulation with traffic flow, congestion, what's happening if there's an event at Oak Ridge, what's happening if there is a varsity game for softball, baseball for Lenmar. And then again, just for first timers, out of timers, out of towners coming into the park, wayfinding signage, just understanding if they come in from tenth, they go to the Arts Environment Center Building, have to turn around, need to understand how to do that. So basically trying to strike that balance, what what we're showing here and indicating, and this probably had a lot of bit of back and forth and a few reiterations that you would notice in the concept plan, is that really, we're not touching anything in terms of fields one through four. Really, the biggest thing that we're doing there is just looking at that model in terms of other complexes in town. Prospect Meadows is probably the most recent one in terms of what is the best efficient use of bullpens, batting cages. One of the biggest things we heard is we don't necessarily need more diamonds, we just maybe need better drainage and we just need a place to stage. Because naturally, if you got people parking up north at the school, they're walking and utilizing this trail here. And now if we're going to open up parking on the east side, essentially, we're creating this nice little trail link and loop, you know, here that basically we're trying to upgrade fields five through eight. Now this just becomes a nice walkable complex. And so maybe it's a little bit more invite inviting, trying not, trying again to thread that needle about trying to have not too much parking, not have a through route, go all the way through from Irish Drive all the way over to Albertan Road. And so again, striking that balance of, you know, trying to be good stewards and be, you know, safety in terms of traffic circulation and flow. One of the things that we did propose, and it was one of the latest ads, was to not show parking in any kind of connection through here for the future tennis center. You can see this area right here is the existing trail that that is in place right now. And then you can see how we've realigned and attached to it on the south side and on the north side up here by the track and field. And essentially, what we're trying to convey there in the intent is that city and park, this is your land, your property, you will be able to police that and govern that and control that, whether it's the use of bollards, removable bollards, gates, essentially really control how that egress and that that circulation flows and have those conversations and be be mindful and thoughtful about how it works best, excuse me, how it works best with the schools and all the different activities going on. The last area then is probably the biggest wildcard and unknown, obviously, just with future growth, but the area, basically future connections, future growth to the north. And as you all seen from the informational packet, there was plenty of studies in terms of surrounding area, land uses, ownership. So we we acknowledge and understand that the school has this, this land. Obviously, there is the potential for future growth and development of the residential on the east side. So really, the biggest thing that we've wanted to preserve and that we kept on hearing in our comments is preserve, preserve, preserve the natural areas. And so we have this natural north south spine, if you will, in terms of natural areas, prairie areas, where we can create paved trails, informal trails that are groomed in there to be able to promote snow skiing, or I'm sorry, cross-country skiing, you know, different, you know, activities that basically can be utilized all, all throughout the year. What you notice though, in terms of the north playground, is just basically trying to give What you notice though, in terms of the north playground is just basically trying to give a nod in terms of an equitable. Mirroring of what's happening on the south side. So in terms of programming, you're going to notice that on that, that north side, you see the playground, the structure, splash pad, spray ground. And then some hard surface, uh, play, whether that's pickleball, basketball, tennis courts. Again, trying to respond back to what, you know, surveys of what, you know, the interests of those who want to best utilize it or is gonna, is gonna have here. So with that, I want to jump into the cost in one more slide that these two slides really go back and forth. So you're going to see in terms of a phasing plan. And this was based on some of the comments and some of the feed, the wonderful feedback we had from steering committee and all the different members in terms of understanding. If you had to rank them, we've had these, this long ongoing conversation about, you know, anywhere from one to twenty items. And obviously, as you look at your packet, you'll have a full scale keynote plan that has anywhere from fifty to sixty items that give greater detail. And identify exactly what is what and what is meant to be. So we, we, we did hear back and understand that, you know, the areas in yellow that you see here is really something that could be. You know, go to, go to plan improvements, construction documents, something that could be implemented in that one to three-year plan. The areas in green are in that three to ten, in terms of, we really like it, but we know that the stuff that's in yellow probably wants to happen first. And then again, as the future growth happens on the north and east, northeast sides and improvements happen on Tenth Street. Um, obviously areas in blue are a little bit more down the line. So if I skip back a little bit in terms of the, the costs. We really, again, the numbers you see that we've, we've, uh, sent over to Seth and Brent in terms of a full itemized cost estimate. Are really again, talking about today's dollars. Um, I want to keep in mind that when you see the costs on the board, it is a snapshot of today's construction dollars. At the same time, we're also, we also allocated a twenty percent contingency in there, just understanding that. Inflation, obviously number of factors, grants, funding, you know, outside factors. I mean, there, there's just a whole host of things that can happen over a ten to fifteen year lifespan. I would also note that in some of these areas, we really are trying to be conservative, understanding that the big ticket items are the buildings. And paving. And so the, I would say even the other one for, uh, the area number two, the southwest pond, it, it really kind of comes down to when we get into the engineering of it. And so there are a lot of opportunities to even, you know, these are phased out, but there's even opportunities to have value engineering and phase out some of the areas within. Uh, like an area two, there's something that could be held off until later. So. You see thirty-four point nine million again, if we're drilling down, I mean, you know, twenty percent if we're dialed in in terms of engineering dollars. Maybe that's closer to twenty-eight, thirty, and then that could be divided and spread out over ten to fifteen years, however we, we go about it, but. So again, I jump back to the phasing plan here. Uh, again, again, the, the highest priority of the list of feedback that we received was naturally the area there, number one. Arts Environment Center Building, relocation, reorganization of building addition, greenhouse, parking improvements, circulation, community gardens. Area two is probably split between utilizing some of that grading for the pond as well as establishment of the dog run area and the wetlands. Area, and then area four is something that really probably could be pushed. Uh, but in terms of the discussions with, uh, baseball and softball, it's one of those things where. If we can, if there's something that can kind of be piecemealed on and we can make some improvements, but phase it out. But really attack some of the fields one through four and then maybe bring fields five through eight up later. That now you're getting wider use for all eight fields as opposed to just four in terms of different tournaments and events. And then really, basically everything in green that you're seeing there is, i- is essentially just, i- it's been talked about. Lot of great feedback, a lot of great creative ideas. There's a, so many items that you're going to see in those meeting minutes and all the different feedback and comments that we received that really. Is something that's going to be into the nuts and bolts of when we get into specifically programming and planning and getting into the construction document and implementation phase. So one of those things is certainly document, keep for records. Um, but in terms of how you would convey that and show that, it's maybe a little bit more on the event side in terms of, for a master plan document. But again, just a wealth of quality information and feedback. And so this, um, a- again, we have a blown up version of this in the packet and sent over to Seth and Brent for, for marketing purposes. But again, I'll, I'll end it here on the slide. I'm sure I'm way over my time. Uh, so I do, I do appreciate. Uh, the opportunity to speak with you all. Um, but again, we, I, I'll reiterate what Colt said and, and this process again, over the last. Six, seven months, uh, with Seth and Brent and, and all of you, uh, from steering committee members to technical committee members, it's just, just been wonderful. So we are very excited about the direction this is headed. We are more than happy to help answer any questions. And we're really excited to see where it goes. Thank you.
It's kind of cool that with your connection to Marion that you get to. Oh, have an impact on the future of the community in such a meaningful way. Maybe when RDG opens their Marion office, you can come and staff it.
I, I will say, even though, even though my thing was on the west side, every time I'm here, I make a stop, there's always pizza, every time.
All right. Do we have any questions?
Steve.
Yeah, first of all, a comment, I think there's something in there for everybody. And obviously it's going to take a long time to get all of that done. One item that, and I, I think the number one priority, having that in the southeast corner with the main building expansion of that area. That's where all of the current activities are, a lo- a large percentage of them. So that does make sense to me. But one number kind of jumped out at me, if you can explain it a little bit more. And that is in your one to three-year plan. You've got a cost of four and a half million dollars for ball fields one through four. Your comment, if I recall correctly, was the ball fields really don't need a lot of attention. You're talking about maybe some dugouts.
Yeah.
And things, but you've got fifteen percent of the total budget for these ball fields. So obviously you're doing something more than dugouts.
It is the nicest shade structure you've ever seen. No, actually, it is lighting. And there was a, there was a discussion and a comment about the possibility of at some point in time being able to do lighting for all those fields. And so that's where that cost came from.
So a large part of that number is lighting all those four fields?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
That is, that is the lion's share of that, yeah.
Okay, because otherwise the fields themselves, you said were.
Yep.
Playable, they're okay, maybe a little grainy tissue.
There was, there was talk about three of the four fields do have a little bit of drainage issue.
Yeah.
So I mean, but again, in terms of significant costs, that's.
That, that's lighting for those.
Exactly. So I'd say regrading, reseeding, uh, surface restoration, storm utilities, bullpens.
Okay.
Bankages, yes, that is, yeah, definitely.
All right, thank you.
I think the other big thing there too is just fit and finish. So once you get into structure items like. The dugouts, things like that can add up quickly depending on the fit and finish that you're looking for for each of those. So if they go from a one to a five, all of a sudden that can be associated with the cost as well.
Yeah, and, and to your point, uh, Steve, is that, um, yes, the lighting was the largest number. The second largest number on that breakout was the desire to have a larger concession in restroom area that they already have. So essentially we, we apply again, not knowing the full, you know, bottom line or final design of that. That essentially came into that square footage cost. We essentially doubled the footprint that they had and then allocated that. So those were the two highest costs right there.
Okay, thanks. I don't know if you did the calculation. If you didn't, it's fine, but is, do you have some sense of like when it's all built out? What percentage will be passive and what percentage will be active? Of the entire hundred and eighty acres? It's okay if you don't. I just, I'm just curious like what the, how would that breakdown would be?
I, 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 the quick answer is probably no, I don't have a specific percentage number. But to that point, I think one of the things that everyone recognizes in, in yourself, obviously, is that amongst the hundred and eighty acres, there are just so many interchangeable pieces. And there's, and I think the comment was made earlier that there's something for everyone. So there are some items that while they are passive in terms of their footprint and area to occupy, they could certainly be active. And there, there's interchangeability and adaptability and flexibility to a lot of the spaces. Um, in terms of sheer size, I don't, I don't know if it was maybe like a fifty-fifty split. Um, because if you, if you go back, um, you know, you can, the. You can see that main, that main focus, that main spine, that north-south, oops, sorry. Helps when you get. But you can see that that main spine right there in the middle. I mean, that, i- it's a lot of real estate. And then we're also trying to reclaim a lot of na- native natural plantings here as well. So there's quite a bit. And then a- also, y- you know, really what you see in color. Is something that's proposed and new that we're touching, we're, you know, anything that doesn't have any kind of like really. Graphic, you know, or any kind of rendering style, we're really trying to leave alone and keep as natural as possible, keep it as passive as possible.
I think the other big item to note there too, is kind of the in-between of the active and the passive. So things like the water bodies. Generally speaking, they could be active. You could go kayak, you can go interact, you can fish. But in terms of like a day-to-day, it's going to feel pretty passive and it's going to feel more restorative than like a hyperactive event or anything going on. So the color on the plan, I think sometimes looks a little bit more activated than it might be, just in terms of visual sense. But areas like the wetland, the ponds, some of those areas behind where the art walk trail would be, it's still a really large area. A really open expanse of prairie and natural materials too. So there's some good buffer in between some of those zones.
Thank you very much. Sarah?
I, I'm looking at, I'm looking at page eleven, um, which is, I think that's old plan. What I'm trying to find in the document again is where the, the, um. There was discussion about roads through this park.
Hmm, yeah.
And so we had put the one, uh, ob- obviously there's the existing one that goes into the parking ramp like up Irish Drive. And then we have the one that comes in by the Arts and Entertainment Building. Um, and then the only, is the only other one then would come in on the, off of tenth on the north side and that basically kind of. Runs along just the edge of the park and then up to where that other park would be. Is that the, is that what we decided, that was just finally decided on the only roads? Cause at one time there's kind of a road that was going to kind of meander through a little.
Yeah.
We had some concerns about.
Yeah, and so I, I'd speak to that in terms of, this is probably the closest enlarged version, at least of this one. And I just can't help but hit that, okay? There we go. Yeah, and then, then that's one thing with the art trail, probably one of those things that I forgot that it was included in the slide. But yeah, th- this, this section that if you, that's what you're talking about there, Sarah, is in terms of. This, this drive that you see here, I want to be perfectly clear, that is not a public drive. That is not like Irish Drive as it comes from the neighborhood over to the maintenance building. Essentially, the, the, the way that your main entry park drive functions coming off of tenth. That i- in through the, to the front of the AC building, this is essentially the same thing. The, the biggest, the biggest reason why we made that move was a couple of reasons there. You can see the little trays of angled parking. Here, here and here. And that's essentially just to give parkgoers the opportunity to park a little bit closer to a trail. Get that interaction, go immediately right to the art pond, go immediately right to the different art nodes, jump on the trails. Experience that loop, uh, you know, have, have quick little drop-off areas. But at the same time, it had a double, dual purpose to. You know, the desire to basically. Have these support buildings right behind the amphitheater and the stage itself. In terms of con- uh, not concessions, but restrooms, uh, stage support. Whether that's equipment for bringing in the large trucks for lighting, rigging, uh, equipment supplies. As well as having just a place for performers on some of the larger events, having like that green room, a changing room. So they're not actually having to go all the way through, through the, the amphitheater space, all the way up to the AC building and back. Also, we're trying to be mindful a little bit too for, um, in terms of ADA accessibility. So those in wheelchairs, having a little bit more easy time to traverse through there, giving them a place to have a restroom close to the performance stage. As well as the possibility to start integrating some seating real up close there in terms of wheelchair-friendly accessibility. And so again, trying to hit that, that inclusivity, um, aspect of things. Uh, uh, again, similar to what we were talking about on the trail on the west side. And you'll see this in the keynotes, is that this would be controllable. Again, locking gate here and then a locking gate up here on the north side. Um, we didn't want to, we wanted to keep the improvements and the discussion and the focus really on just the, the park boundaries themselves. But we obviously understand or cognizant and aware of, you know, the, the possible future additions that may be happening here. So really is what you see indicated in the white, the white roadway here, that would be public right-of-way, public street, the possible extension of Hunter's Green Way. And then naturally some sort of, uh, extension, uh, north here on this north-south. But you can see right where the cursor is, would essentially be, that could be an egress only. That could be a secondary park entry. It could be something that's controlled by park staff, city staff to say, we're only going to let you exit here. If it's a huge event, if it's a huge performance, if it's fireworks, um, so whatever that may be. So just again, the ability to control that, that drive and that traffic and provide a little bit of, uh, circulation and alleviate that congestion of. You know, emergency vehicles, buses dropping off, large equipment tru- uh, trucks, excuse me. And the last comment I'd say about that drive is if it was a phasing thing, if this is one of those things where if this wasn't going to happen in five, ten, fifteen years. There is the ability to not even pave all this back here. And really almost essentially you could build the spur and have sort of a semi turnaround of some sort to really just to be able to. Provide that access for really the, just concentrate those activities in that focus to make things a little bit more efficient, just right behind the stage.
Thank you. Um, yeah, because I think we have, there's quite a few concerns on that with, and I share them because. They get tired of hearing about this, but our Saturday yoga mornings, I mean, those are very, it's, people are there. Because they like the peace and they like the quiet and they like to hear the birds. I mean, yes, yes, we can hear the ball fields, does that, but I mean, that's a happy.
Yeah.
Thing and, and to think about having cars driving by or lights if you're having a performance and there's car lights coming in and out or whatever that looks like. To me, it just, I don't, I, I have concerns about that taking from the. Feel of what makes this park so special and the location that it's at. So. Um, I would just want to have those, I mean, we're cognizant of, we've talked about it, so we'll just kind of be tracking along and trusting in.
Yeah, I mean, not playing, not playing developer in this, this sense and understanding for residential future growth. You know, I mean, I, I obviously understand that what the school owns, but not knowing exactly how they're going to orient their parking, their drives, the building. Athletic fields and, and whatnot. So again, uh, it's a little bit of a, a little bit of guesswork. But the reason why we did show the street right there on that north-south property line as well as right here. Is if you'll recall from the document in twenty-eleven, the, it, we, there's this big curve linear swooping roadway that kind of went in and out. It, you know, a lot of the studies that we've seen in terms of parks in the past and their connections to neighborhoods. The, there's a vice, there's a vice versa. There's, there's benefits for the, the developers and the neighborhood and the residential side. As well as the park in terms of having that openness. And when it's planned and carefully designed and in considerations given in terms of a layering effect from the front door to your porch, to your front yard. The streetscaping, the landscaping. And so if we have this graduated transition. From essentially, if there was a house looking out due south, right out into the park, you'd have this nice stepping and layering process as you keep going south. It's really kind of help filter and buffer that, whether that's a visual buffer or a noise buffer. So really there's. Uh, there's a lot of opportunities to really kind of work on that whole northeast quadrant, if you will.
Great, thank, I was going to say thank you again. It's a lot, it was a lot of work, it was a lot of meetings, it was a lot of feedback. And I know, I mean, I'll put a lot of thought and. Listened to what folks were saying. And I do appreciate all the building improvements. I know we had to go fast through that, but. You know, that's a building that gets a lot of use and has a lot of potential and the gardens all there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Actually, to, uh, tag off of what, uh, Sarah just mentioned relative to the, um, Arts and Environmental Building. Um, I just noticed that phase, uh, phases, uh, the projects that have been as assigned in that very first phase, one through three. That represents about sixty-three percent of the guestimated total project cost for all three phases. I, can you just remind us, what were the drivers again? To put those, um, activities in the year, uh, year one through three. Uh, plan, what, what were the principal drivers that, uh, assigned them into that? And I, I, at first blush, I don't have any issue with that. I just want to be clear because that obviously drives it, drives a big investment number.
Sure. And I, and I think the facility planning study was really again in that, and Seth, you can check my numbers here. I'm trying to, I think it was in that nine point two. I mean, and so with a twenty percent contingency, it quickly, you know, that becomes obviously the lion's share of that cost for area one. That being said, um, you know, not being architect, full disclaimer as a landscape architect. Um, we had our architects kind of look through their work with Seth and city staff, park staff to understand how that building is being used. Has it's outgrown some of its lifespan in terms of the HVAC systems, audio, video, technology? And then is there just a better, more, uh, I guess efficient way of reorganization for renovations? Um, some of that, all, some of that cost was also implemented into the storm shelter and the gross square footage that that would require in terms of. Out, understanding occupancy and whatnot. Um, there is a further breakdown on that and I do believe that is in the appendix at the end of all those notes. So there's a little bit more, I guess, meat to that i- in terms of the explanation of what went into all the different, uh, programming spaces, offices, classrooms. Uh, and community spaces. Yeah. So some of the drivers to the Arts and Environment Center, one, uh, the facility coming up to twenty years old. And so obviously there's some, um. Future maintenance items, uh, larger, uh, dollar items, uh, and then also, uh, the safe room capable, uh, having a safe room.
Uh, and then also, uh, the safe room capable, uh, having a safe room, uh, storm-related was one of the drivers. As far as the, uh, conservatory or greenhouse, uh, space, uh, there was a lot of discussions on, uh, with the master gardeners and on expanding those spaces, but also operationally, uh, being able to service some of the other, uh, needs of the city as far as, uh, our annuals and perennial, uh, beautification throughout the city and doing those in-house rather than, um, contracting, um, uh, all those needs, uh, and supplies. As far as the pond and wetland improvements, those were moved up. One, coincidentally, they could be done similarly at the same time with, with the movement, uh, all being there. Uh, the pond isn't, uh, functioning like it should. And so that was, uh, one reason why it was moved forward. And then the ball fields was, uh, really driven through with the, the stakeholder groups, with the, uh, softball and baseball groups.
That, that's helpful. Thanks. It just, you know, as I said, that's about two-thirds of the total cost. But obviously, the building is the, is, is the big, uh, uh, dollar requirement. But, um, okay, that, that certainly makes sense. Thank you.
Gage?
Um, actually, I have the same question as Grant. But what I will, will say, um, just kind of like, I was, I was reading the, the packet this weekend. The one thing that really stuck out to me about the, the plan is, uh, the phrase that said, just let the park breathe, was kind of like one of the themes. And I think the plan really does, um, show that. And I had the same concern as Sarah as well with that road kind of jutting through kind of the space that breathes the most. Um, but I think it's really important that, obviously, the park is a very active space when, uh, when we have events and stuff. But, you know, day-to-day, it's a very passive space. And it's a great kind of oasis for, for Marion, and there's not many other parks in the area like it. But one thing I was kind of wondering, and this probably isn't, uh, um, this will probably be more specifics outside the general master plan. But when I was reading through it, talking about those kind of environmental, educational opportunities, I think, and I don't know if this was kind of discussed, but, you know, this is a space that's not just for physical wellness, but it connects to nature, it's that mental wellness piece. And we have, uh, the community garden, so you have that local food systems piece. And I'm, I just wanted to point out while I was thinking about it that I'm hoping those educational, uh, aspects obviously point out the environmental and sustainable aspects. But to really talk about, um, how those food systems and mental wellness kind of all connect together in this, this open nature space. So I just wanted to add to that too. And I don't know if there have been conversation on those educational components as well.
Yeah, and, and to that point, and that's part of, again, just, just the sheer breadth and wealth of all the comments that we got back, especially from the different, the stakeholder interviews. It, it's one of those items where we're sitting down there and we're listening to all that feedback and all those comments and all these different ideas. And they're all wonderful. And it's, but it's also one of those things where it's like, how do I, you know, how, at a, you know, two-hundred scale drawing, how do I show, um, you know, windmills or geothermal or, you know, solar panels? And just, you know, how do you, how do you indicate, um, we're gonna have way finer science with QR codes? So this really, you know, really starting to come up to the new technology and have it integrate back to maybe a city website or just all these informational, educational opportunities. So it's one of those things where we certainly want to hold on to that, document that, record that. And basically, you know, when something's green-lighted to look to implement it in terms of construction and say, okay, now we need to revive this and be like, okay, now we can really get into it and understand and really showcase that and take that next step to really make sure that all those things, all those great ideas come to fruition. And we, you know, do it in a thoughtful way that really is, you know, on the cusp of, you know, having a wonderful, wonderful park and amenity.
Absolutely. Thanks.
And there were other subtle moves made too throughout the process. So early on, where the wetland areas, we talked about having a third pond and getting different scales of pond across. And then the more we talked through what the logistics of that could mean, the wetland brings about new wildlife and planting and educational opportunities that the ponds don't. So just trying to find ways to diversify the planting palette, the habitat for different wildlife that's in the area so that you expand some of those, um, simple educational moments was thought through as well.
Thank you.
Okay, um, you know, I too have the same kind of reservations about the street going through. Um, and we really don't know how that area is going to develop, right? I mean, you're, by showing streets there, you're kind of just, that's just pure guess. So, man, I wonder if it can be, you know, shown as not going through until we see how that, until we see how that, um, parcel to the north, on the northeast corner develops. Um, because then that, you know, that would make it more clear as to how you want that to connect to the neighborhood or purpose. It's just my, my feeling. Um, anyone else? Anything else? Well, great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, our next item is purchasing policy. Rita, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Your Honor and City Council. Um, I'm Rita Hackingham, purchasing coordinator for, in the Finance Department. And I'm working on drafting a revised purchasing policy. On March twenty-first, I brought an initial draft to City Council. And out of that meeting came a lot of discussion and some feedback and questions. And I'm circling back to answer those questions today. So my goal is to get your feedback on the changes and see if you have any additional questions. So the questions that were identified are on the slide right here. Let's go ahead and start with the first one. So the first, um, request from City Council was for a report for payments made that are greater than twenty thousand dollars. And the staff recommendation for that is to use the schedule of bills and, which is a report you currently get today. And for finance to highlight any of the vendors that have payments over twenty thousand dollars. Um, this is a report that we already are looking at, and we're already identifying these vendors because they need a second signature on their check. So this would be, um, easy for us to do. I think this would be something that would meet your needs. I can't remember who it was, if it was Steve or Grant, one of you that requested this.
No, I, I mentioned I do that. Oh, I mean, there's my, there's my report bat right there for this month. Okay, uh, so I do it all the time because anything over twenty thousand dollars represents eighty to eighty-five percent of all the dollars. So that's why I do that. And then I think somebody else asked if we could get that report done separately. So to me, what I get there is still okay. Uh, if you can do it separately without a lot of extra work, I think somebody else was asking for that, so.
Go ahead. Rita, is this a manual process? Or is this something that you do programmatically within your system?
Um, the report is a report that's a new world that we create. As far as the manual process, we do go, we do review this report for payments greater than twenty thousand because we're pulling those checks out and getting a second signature. So this would just basically be us highlighting the vendor while we're looking through the report anyway. So it wouldn't require a lot of additional.
So the highlighting is, is a manual process?
Yes.
And it, um, very rough estimate. And I need to be more like Steve, it appears. Um, how many are twenty thousand or above in terms of expenditures? I mean, do we have hundreds?
I think the, um, report that I pulled, for an example, was fifteen, twenty. Does that sound like what?
My worry was, is if, if you were having to spend time to highlight a hundred and fifty, that becomes less of a good idea, right? Okay, that's all. Okay.
Okay. So public improvement project change orders. I'm gonna spend a little time going back through. Um, this was a topic that we had a lot of discussion on in March. And so I'm gonna kind of reiterate the proposed solution, um, for this topic. So this is nothing new. So when City Council would see public improvement project change orders when the project is over budget or when the cumulative changes exceed ten percent of the contract amount up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if neither of those thresholds are exceeded, then the department director would be able to proceed. And I have some examples on the next slide, some different examples. I'll give you a couple minutes to look at those if you have any questions. I also have some data I'd like to share with you, and I can pop back to the slide if we need to. We heard a lot of feedback, um, from you on project change orders. So we did a little bit of data gathering. And what we found is that in the last two years, there was only one project that went over the ten percent, and it also happened to go over the hundred and fifty thousand. So what this says is that most generally, we're under those thresholds for our project change orders, our cumulative project change orders. So I'm hoping that makes it a little bit more clear. Um, is there any questions on that? Does that seem? Okay. So the other request was a dual authorization on project change orders. And our recommendation is that finance would provide this dual authorization. And how we would do that is the departments would give us a summary each month of all of the change orders for the month. And then we would review it and provide our dual authorization. As far as change orders that come to City Council, so if the thresholds are exceeded, if the budget is ever exceeded, if the ten percent is exceeded or the hundred and fifty thousand, then those project change orders would come to City Council. And the recommendate, the recommendation is that we would present those on the change order memo. So you would see a summary, a history of all of the change orders that brought us to the cumulative ten percent, hundred and fifty thousand. And this is an example of what that would look like in your memo. Any questions or thoughts on any of that? So one other thing, um, that came out of your feedback, we re-looked at change orders that were not related to projects. And we decided to simplify it a little bit, and we removed the additional ten percent over the threshold. So the new recommendation is that for change orders not related to projects, at each level, for instance, the department director, they'd be able to approve up to their threshold, which is ten thousand dollars. So cumulative change orders up to ten thousand dollars within their threshold limit, they would be able to approve. This just kind of simplifies it a little bit. So the next steps, where we will be seeking approval of the policy, um, with an effective date of seven one. We'll be updating a couple of park policies and rescinding for policies. Is there any questions? Anything?
Go ahead. Rita, if, if we could back up just one slide?
Sure.
Okay, change orders not including projects. So this is just ebb and flow budget kind of stuff.
So this would be like, um, a purchase was made for a vehicle and they forgot to include the FOB. Or, you know, so the purchase order changed, or they forgot, someone made a purchase and they forgot to include shipping charges, that kind of stuff.
So in this, it, it, it's clear that it says, uh, changes up to the authorized budgeted threshold limits. If a change is necessary and it exceeds the budgeted threshold limit, where's the approval at that point?
So the department director would be able to approve if the total of the change is over ten thousand dollars, then it would be at the city manager level, up to fifty thousand, and then over fifty thousand to City Council. But usually, these are smaller ticket items.
What I get, let me rephrase the question. Maybe the question isn't even appropriate. But if the, if the purchase change order would cause us to exceed a budgeted item, where's the approval?
So that would be a non, a non-budgeted item, and it would come to City Council?
Let me, let me make up an example. Something is a hundred thousand dollars that's been, been, um, put into the budget, and there's a change order necessary for a variety of reasons. And now, all of a sudden, it, um, there needs, it, it needs to be authorized up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So it's twenty-five K above the original budgeted amount. What's that authorization look like?
If that, if I may, Rita, I think I can better answer this one.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrapped up around the axle for something that doesn't occur.
When it comes to budget, there's a couple of things to keep in mind. So in the instance that you provided, if the item's gonna go over budget by twenty-five thousand, the first thing that's gonna happen is the department's going to contact finance. And finance is going to say, okay, that items, line item's going over. Is there another line item within your budget that will be under that we can make up that difference?
Okay.
If it comes to the, uh, conclusion that there isn't, then it's going to come through City Council.
Okay, all right. So if there's an offset because of an underspend elsewhere?
Correct.
Okay.
And just a reminder to all City Council, um, when it comes to the budget at the state level and when that budget amendment is actually required, that is by function. So even if fire department was over, if police was under collectively managing that at the city manager and the finance level, it still may not merit an actual amendment. Granted, we would always want to bring those items to your attention, so we would likely still add them.
All right. Thank you. That, that clarifies the basis of what I was going after. Got it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Okay, the next item is a discussion on proposed detention, detention basin maintenance agreement. Steve Cooper, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Steve Cooper, the Stormwater Coordinator. Uh, back in August, we had a discussion, I presented about detention basins. We had a discussion about who maintains them, what does it cost for the city to maintain them, what do we need to do with this? And the direction was given that we would like to, you would like to develop a new development agreement that makes it so that the city does not maintain any more detention basins and new developments. And that, that, uh, the people who live around that detention basin or storm, post-construction stormwater best management practice is what they're called. So we put this together. I worked with Kara and Mike and Dave and Kim on this. And this is what it looks like. Uh, I don't expect you to read this right here. This is, it's, there's not a whole lot to show and tell on a nine-page legal document. But bottom line here is, we have this agreement that we put together that transfers the ownership or just makes it so that a new development that is proposed in Marion, there's a, uh, the, the homeowners that, the property owners that drain into that will be responsible for maintaining it. There are three parts to it. Parts one and two define how the detention basin is gonna be designed and constructed and who's responsible for doing what. The developer will be responsible for maintaining it up during construction. And then it gets transferred over to the homeowners and the property buyers in that development. And then there's an exhibit A at the end, which is the legal agreement that every property owner will buy or will sign when they buy their property, that will be filed with the county. It runs with the land. We'll keep track of that in our community development software. We'll keep track of all of that. Um, so what's next with this? Should we go forward? If you want us to keep going forward with this, we will present this to the, uh, Planning and Zoning. Um, so what's next with this? Should we go forward? If you want us to keep going forward with this, we will present this to the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission. Tell them, this is what we would like to do, this is what council has directed us to do. Uh, we will also amend and, and revise any of the relevant codes and policies that we have related to this development. And we will communicate all of this new agreement thing with the, uh, the metro area. Home Builders Association and Development Community. So with that, would you like for us to continue going forward with this new development agreement? Or, uh, it's, it's, the development agreement would be separate, it would be, this is simply for the. Post-construction best management practices for whatever the development has.
Steve, this is for new developments and, okay, so not retroactive for anything.
Right, so, let's say that you put this, you say tonight, we're gonna do this, then someone comes in tomorrow and says, I'd like to propose a new development. This goes with it.
So it's, it's one of the required documents before it's the development's approved?
So this would be, upon approval, would be immediately effective?
Yes, or whenever you would like to go.
Well, I just, I, I guess what I was just thinking about is, is, as you say here, communicate with the development community to give them. Uh, you know, hey, everyone, this starts on X date. Okay.
Okay, city manager has.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, I, I think the, the, the work that's gonna have to be done to amend the relevant city codes is, is gonna buy us some of that. That time to, to get out in and really provide that advanced communication to the development world. We did, we did bring this up, if I'm not mistaken, and if I am, please correct me, uh, at our open house. Was that last month already? March, two months ago now, so.
I'm not sure if we brought it up then, but Steve did present it to the Developers Council, that was a week or two ago. So the developers are well aware that this is coming.
Okay, is, is there anyone who has strong reservations or reservations at all about proceeding in this, in this way? I see consensus here.
We will move forward with this and do what needs to be done.
Okay, we're now on the agenda review. The first item that's marked by staff for discussion is the library item G1. Are there any items prior to that, uh, that any council members would like to discuss or ask questions on? Prior to G1. Yes, go ahead Sarah.
This is related to A8.
Go ahead.
I am supportive, let me just say that upfront, um, of what we have to do with this. My question really relates around, and maybe this hasn't been flushed out yet. I'm gonna go back to my old world where I, where I worked on these type of. Initiatives where we're dealing with workforce. And. My question is, at what stage we approve this, it starts moving? It looks like the DFC of Cedar Rapids is the main point on this as far as organizing, communicating, and gathering. Um, and not, and not the economical answer, so I was just curious, at some point, are we? When does, when do our local people get involved? I'm assuming this is gonna be a collaborative piece where. Like we did, it was with the Chambers nonprofit, we led it and worked with economic development, but I, and we're graciously contributing. So that the organizations in our community don't have to, but then are they brought in to be part of the? Obviously data or discussions or how does this get carried out? Like who, once we're gonna do initiatives and I think that.
The plan is put together by this, this is for phase one, basically, to put the plan together. With the consultant. And then the plan then will have implementation. Steps, that's where everyone comes in, but our, um, economic development partners have been part of meetings already.
So they know that, like this, they could be.
Yeah, but.
They're gonna have pieces of this that they're going to.
So, exactly, the economic development organizations as well as the, uh, businesses. Corporations, businesses in the, in, in, in the metro area will all be called upon to do their part in implementing. Everyone will have a way that they could. Uh, work to make this successful. So, but that, that comes in, in the second part, at when the plan is put together, then there will be implementation strategies. That everyone will be asked to. Help, to, to help implement, as well as, I think that's when the business community would be asked to fund, help fund those strategies.
Is it, um, and then, pardon me, I read it and I don't remember, so the first phase, once we approve this. It starts and then the first phase is how long and then the second phase kicks in when? We thinking how long is the study phase or the fact finding gathering?
According to documents that we received from Cedar Rapids today. They will be submitting the RFP out shortly, contracts anticipated for end of June. Is when they would award it and then from there, the milestones would be established.
Anyone else on that item or any other item prior to G1? Okay, let's move on to G1.
Thank you, at last general election, the Marion voters approved measures that would increase our library board number to eleven. Would also extend, or sorry, would shorten their terms from six years to four, and it also provided that we would. Reappoint either three or four members in any given year. What we did not do was address how to handle the board members who are currently in place. Whose terms might conflict with those provisions, so what we have proposed to do is. To extend the terms of the members that are highlighted up there by one year, so that would make us consistent with our code. When we were looking at our solutions, I called the state law library and asked them what do other people do in this situation? And, and she did confirm that, um, Iowa Code Chapter 392 is, is one of the more confusing provisions of the state code. And that, um, that cities handled this in either one of two ways, they either ask board members to step down. And shorten their terms and then reappoint somebody to a full term instead of a partial term. Or they extend term limits until just that one-time extension until everything is consistent. And so we brought this to the library board and asked them their opinion. One of the reasons why library board changes are typically done by election, if they're a permanent change, is to maintain that autonomy. So in order to try and preserve that, we went to them first to see what would your desired, um, measure be to fix this? And they voted overwhelmingly in favor of extending the terms rather than asking people to step down. If anybody whose term is extended does not want to serve that extra year, they are able to step down. If everybody on council is okay with this, if you're generally in support, we'll leave this on the agenda for Thursday. Otherwise, we'll take it off and we can go back and discuss with the board.
Kara, so, um, this basically brings us in line with the requirements of state code. And it maintains a continuity of governance to achieve that.
Yes, and it puts us in line with our code changes that the voters approved at the last general election.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Anyone have strong reservations on proceeding this way? Okay, I think you can keep it on the agenda. Alright, the next item that is marked for discussion is, uh. C1 under the, the regular agenda. C1, so any item prior to C1 on the regular agenda that anyone has questions about or would like to discuss individually? Okay, we'll move on to C1, Chief.
Yes, sir, this is the, uh, resolution approving the contract with Census GAZO for the automated traffic camera program. Uh, we put out an RFP. Uh, to, to install ATE cameras at Highway 100 and East Post Road, Highway 13 and 151, and then a mobile unit. Uh, we only got the two responses back, uh, they were reviewed by myself. Uh, Terrell and I looked at them together, and Mike Barkalow and, and shared them with Ryan Miller as well. Uh, after looking through that, the, the recommendation's gonna be with Census GAZO. They've got a local warehouse here in town, they've got one of their engineers lives here in town. Uh, they're actually about three minutes away from the police department, so I think our service that we would get if there are problems, we would, we would have a pretty good shot. At getting some service and not to take anything away from the other company. Census GAZO's got Iowa customers, uh, the other company did not. Census GAZO services most of the larger cities here in Iowa that have an ATE system. There's no upfront cost to the city for the equipment, uh, they're gonna provide a vehicle for the mobile unit, so we don't have to take a vehicle out of service to do that. They process the citations, they mail the citations out after we approve them, uh, they'll even do a second notification if there's not a collection done. They've got a pretty robust analytical program that comes along with the package, uh, that we'd be getting, where it would show traffic patterns. Peak times, uh, lag times, things of that nature, collections, uh, tickets that weren't collected, things like that. The, I think the one thing that jumped out at me is they, they're, they were aware of and addressed in the RFP. The upcoming work at Highway 100 and East Post Road, they, they had gotten with Anderson Bogart. Uh, they kind of understand what the changes are gonna be down there, that Barkalow's, uh, Mike Barkalow's gonna be pushing through with the added turn lane. Uh, and they were gonna build the system around that, so there would be a little disruption to, to the camera system once it's in. As far as the cost, again, there's no cost, uh, to the city, they pull their money out of, uh, uh, the fines that are collected. GAZO's a little bit more expensive, they take thirty-five dollars per citation, uh, whereas the other one was thirty-three percent. Again, when you, when we look at that, um, traffic data that we collected, about eighty, eighty to eighty-five percent of the, of the, um. Violations that we saw were in that eleven to, to twenty mile per hour range, uh, the way the ordinance reads, that'd be a seventy-five dollar fine. So with that, Census GAZO would take thirty-five dollars, uh, the other company would have taken twenty-four, twenty-four and change. Uh, as those go up, the red light camera violations are a hundred dollars, it would be a little bit more even. Again, when we went into this, we've never said revenue, uh, was the driver for this, it wasn't the driver in this decision. Obviously, we took, we took the one that's gonna net the city probably less money. But I think it's a better fit for us, and I think, again, with the track record they have here in Iowa, I'm more comfortable going with them than I am the other company.
So the agreement is five years, um, if, I assume the, the agreement will, it becomes impossible to perform under the agreement because of state law or something changes.
There's a clause in there that.
We can get out of the deal.
Yep.
Anyone else, Steve?
Yeah, Chief, can you talk about, uh, the license plate reader, cause I think when we had some past discussions. I thought that was always gonna be part of the benefit of doing this as well, in case there's a stolen car or something involved. Uh, in a crime or something like that, that that'll help you, so, but Census is not showing a license plate reader or is it underlying as part of that package?
It's, it's got it, they have the capability of doing it, but they didn't include it in, in the, uh, the RFP. Gen Optic has one camera that does all of it, it'll do red light speed and will have the license plate reader. They didn't quote us on what the cost would be after the first year, just that they would include it for free the first year, Gen Optic. Uh, we didn't get any numbers from GAZO on that.
So do you feel that that is not an important aspect? Or, or should that, or is that something we should, if we go with them? Do other cities have that as part of their package with GAZO?
Dubuque's getting ready to go to one, uh, that's a standalone without speed and red light cameras. Cedar Rapids has some standalone cameras, uh, that they use, they've got mobile units. Uh, I think, I looked at this after seeing the comparison between the two, that maybe the LPR is gonna be a build to, uh, in the future. Uh, I, again, I think. With having that, uh, GAZO here locally, that said a lot for me. On being able to get service out of them and the references that they were able to provide here in Iowa.
Great, so picking up on the license plate reader, and maybe I don't understand the technology. But in order for the, for the Census GAZO system. They, they have to capture an image of the license plate in order to assign the citation to the owner, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so what does the license plate reader do over and above that?
The license plate reader, it, it depends on who it's. How the information is conveyed to find out who the owner of the vehicle is. So that, with the license plate readers, that's gonna bounce off of NCIC, where we would put wanted parties and, and vehicles that are stolen and things like that. With just the traffic camera piece, that's just gonna go through inlets and it'll, that'll give them the, uh, the registered owner of the vehicle. The NCIC piece, it's, it's fairly instantaneous, uh, to get that back for the LPRs. The inlets piece is a little bit slower, uh, but you don't have that, um, need to have that immediate turnaround for the citations.
So do they have a, a LPR capability though?
They do.
I, I think it'd be useful to know what that incremental cost would be. Should we elect and, uh, implement that later? The other question I have, and you, you mentioned that they're basically local. Um, what is their committed response time if there's any kind of, uh, equipment failure that needs to be corrected? That's bordering on a trick question, so maybe. You can provide that on Thursday.
I, I'll do that, I, I've got it, I read it, I should have had it opened on my screen here, but, uh. I'll have that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, the question I have, just cause it's not up here and so that others who might be listening or watching are aware in terms, could you speak a little bit to the? How, when the images are collected, what that, that process is, and then when they're like getting rid of in that audit process to, to hold that accountable?
As far as the retention aspect of the plates?
Yeah, just the images that the cameras capture in general. And if that's something that needs to be talked about Thursday too, I understand.
Let me do that, like it's in here, I'll just have to pull it up.
For sure.
Just, just to tag on to Gage's inquiry there, so maybe this is where, Terrell, you, you've already examined this in terms of the information security. Provisioning wrapped around that, so if we could just, maybe that's a Thursday, just comment along with the other, other items.
Yeah, I can do that, yeah, I looked at it, they, uh, everything that they provided in their RFP checked my boxes. Um, the other one did provide some, but not as much as Census GAZO, so CEGIS compliance, which is the Criminal Justice, uh, Information Security. And compliance as well as many of the other certifications and data protection, data privacy.
Okay.
I can send you over some details on that and then have some for Thursday too.
Anything else on that item? Chief, is that, anything else?
Yeah, that, I think that's it, I'll get those other answers for you on Thursday.
Okay, David, you have the next two items?
Okay, um, first one is a final plat of the Yorkshire addition that Cove's of English Glen. Uh, this is a seven lot, uh, final plat for a single-family residential. You may recall a few months ago, the developer came in and requested that the city take on Yorkshire Court, as well as the detention basin, the city council. That told him that they had to keep those private, so they've resubmitted the final plat. Um, it incorporates Yorkshire Drive and the detention basin, keeps them as privately owned and maintained. And then it incorporates a lot of the balance of the, uh, currently common owned land that was never formally put into an HOA. It incorporates some of the balance of those lands into the new lots. The plat on the screen's a little deceiving, it's the, uh, it's not the dark bounded lots that we're looking at, it's the more lighter shaded lots that are part of the final plat. Uh, but then it creates a series of outlots that will then be dedicated to those existing lots. So it gets rid of all the little common owned land that was kind of missed and not placed into an HOA. Into individual lots and then it keeps the other, the street and the outlot into a newly established HOA lot. So it corrects all the, the previous problems with this development. And allows it to move forward and allows it to be finished up, so this was a two thousand and six plat, so it's one of our older unfinished final plats out there. Uh, so this will keep the same home designs with the front, front facing toward the streets and the alley or the, the garages off the, uh, the private street. So it'll still maintain that same, uh, street presence. There's a slightly updated plat in the, uh, final plat, they had to put an easement over the sidewalks, cause the, the sidewalks meandered. Off that traditional line along the curb. because the ci, the sidewalks meandered off that traditional line along the curb, so they, they kind of meandered through the development. So the revised one does have a uh, a sidewalk easement shown, and I'll have the slide updated for Thursday to reflect that. Uh, and finally, um, a condition on the staff report, if you did read, was to update the surveyor certificate, as well as the, the final plat. I did get those in the other day, that keep the, specifically state that the street in the detention basin remain private. Um, so that'll be reflected in the surveyor certificates, as well as a memorandum of agreement.
Do you have a question? Go ahead.
Well, a question, so with this final plat, and again, I, I think I've called your office in the past, uh, the sidewalk is incomplete on the 35th Street side. So with this now being final-platted, and obviously the construction, whatever they're doing, they can come in from the, the street side on the east, are they going to complete that sidewalk, or is that gonna be completed only when those lots are sold and developed?
It'll be, it'll be when the lots pull building permit.
Okay.
And the intent of the, the current intent of the developer is to get them all built fairly quick.
Oh, really?
Could change, of course, but that's his intent, so I had hoped that spring next year will be completed up on 35th.
Okay, that's consistent with normal policy, right?
Normal policy, yeah.
When the lot is developed, that's when the sidewalk goes in?
Yeah, we do have the provision, the council approved maybe four or five years ago now, that um, five years after the development's approved, sidewalks are required to go within five years. We've kind of focused on that, on when there's no sidewalks on either side of the street, near schools and parks. This one, I, I've kind of kept pushing and ignoring a little bit, because it's for the last three years, I've had three different people ready to, to develop it. So I've tried to put it off, but if this one doesn't happen, it'll be time to push the 35th Avenue sidewalks in, so.
So we'll give, we'll give you one year?
We could, that's what I'm gonna shoot for.
Okay, all right, thanks. Anyone else on that one? Anything else on that one, Dave?
I don't have any, no.
Okay, next one, F2.
All right, second item, uh, this is a, such a quarter review, uh, this is the Masonic Lodge, everybody's familiar with this building, I hope. Uh, they're looking at replacing the first floor windows, as well as the transom windows above, currently boarded up. Uh, they're actually gone, so they're just uh, boarded up vacant space. Uh, they're gonna restore all the glass, uh, shown on the plans there from basically grade to first floor ceiling. I think they're about 20-foot ceilings inside, so it's pretty deep, pretty tall building. This is going back to the 1940s, it's not going back to 1894, uh, unfortunately, that building's long gone. So uh, what we try to do is go back to the most predominant period of the building, the 1940s, so it's gonna restore everything basically how it looked. Uh, it does not reflect in the images, but they are bringing the front doors of the two spaces forward about three feet. They'll still be underneath the envelope of the building, uh, but there's some ADA requirements they've gotta meet there, so it, it brings the doors forward because it gets a little tight when you get back in there. Um, and so it's not reflected in the images, but it, it, that is occurring as well. But basically, again, restores it back to the 1940s. Uh, this went to Uptown Main Street Review, it went to uh, the Stirk Preservation and Planning and Zoning Commission, and they all recommended approval.
Just for information, it looks like there, is there a wall being built in front of the glass?
No, 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 that's an existing pillar, um, today.
Oh.
It was actually quite a bit wider from, they took that pillar off, and there's the 1894 pillar underneath there, but they are rewapping that again. No, no wall, it's a, it's a pillar.
Okay.
It's not the best rendering in the world.
That, that's irrelevant to this discussion, but I just had to ask. Okay, any, any questions on that? Go ahead.
Dave, will this one, um, building then have any canopy or awning on the front of it?
It, it may, uh, that's not their intent, they wanna show off what they've done, but uh, they could come back in with an awning or a canopy of some sort, they'd, if they'd like, if that's the case, they're gonna have to come back to it, unless it's a traditional canvas one that's retractable, um, that would be nice. Uh, but for right now, it's just gonna leave it as is. We'll obviously have to work through signage and whatnot, trying to keep it off the building and onto the glass somehow, maybe in the future, but that's another project.
Anything else? Okay, uh, F3 through F8 are not marked, any questions?
Mayor Nick, I do have one addition, if you don't mind.
Yep.
I have been asked if we could add an item to Thursday's agenda, which would be in association to um, the Bell Tower loss project for, to update our letter of support for workforce housing incentives that is due on June 9th. So I would plan to add that to the agenda on Thursday.
Okay.
That's, that's the Conlan Development of the Old Methodist Church?
Correct, and it would, it would be for the, the phase two, the northeast corner of the project.
So this is a, a comment only about the aesthetics of the, of the property right now. There's some of the, uh, it seems like some of the uh, screening around it is uh, falling down and the like, and I guess the only point is, the building's in rough shape. Now the, now the barriers around it are looking to be in rough shape, so if there's any opportunity to have that improved, it'd be great.
I, I would recommend that we end at that comment and take that into consideration for adding to the agenda discussion on Thursday.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, uh, that brings us to the closed session, Mr. Miskin.
Yep, Mayor, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section 21.51C of the Code of Iowa, three separate items.
Second. Moved in second, adjourned to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section 21.51C of the Code of Iowa. May we have the legal counsel statement?
Thank you, your honor, I've reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section 21.51C.
Thank you. Discussion before we vote. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Miskin?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mayor Abalosely?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Sternan?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion is approved, we're now adjourned to closed session, thank you for joining us.